Well, call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skug?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Val- Valerie. Councilmember Mallory is absent this evening. Councilmember Nye?
Here.
And Councilmember Whitey?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Next item is discussion Glassford Hill Road and Long Look intersection. Improvement CIP number 5379.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Audience tonight. The item I have before you is the widening of Glassford Hill Road. I think Council is well aware we've been designing the widening of this particular project. David and such has been working through the process. Quite a significant process to widen this particular intersection. As you see above here, basically we're doubling the lane capacity at the Long Look intersection. So, I always like to show this exhibit. The green is what's existing there. So, basically the main line of Glassford is five lanes. It's going to nine. The side roads are being doubled. You've got basically three lanes currently, and that will go to six lanes. So, very much a significant capacity improvement at this intersection. What that means is we've actually in the process of negotiating for right-of-way. And the other thing that's required here too is there's an existing pole line on between Lone Cactus and Glassford that's actually adjacent to the existing right-of-way. With this significant lane expansion, we're going to have to actually leave our right-of-way and part of the acquisition. APS has an existing pole line in a prior rights easement. It's their own easement, so we're expanding out of the right-of-way. What I'm leading to, what that means is they have a prior rights. We have to pay for the relocation, because without the widening, they wouldn't have to relocate to utility. Council may be aware too that when their facility is within our rights-of-way, it's their cost. So, this is an easement they acquired years ago, and we have to pay for the relocation. So, the next exhibit, I'm showing if it's going to click over. Well, it says into my sludge. I had one more. It was just the APS exhibit. So, part of their relocation is they are going to upgrade their facility in that area for future expansion. So, what we do owe as part of the bill they have sent us is $46,000, which is part of the widening project. It's in the Public Works capital budget. So, I'm here to request to Council that we pay for this relocation as part of the Long Look intersection widening improvements. And we anticipate that within the next two weeks, we'll go to 100% plans and hopefully send out for bid. Part of the process cooperating with the utility is part of this widening project. At that, I'd be happy to answer questions that Council may have.
Questions, anyone? Marty?
They're also going to be putting in sidewalks on Long Look, correct?
They are. The existing sidewalk bill will be placed as part of that particular expansion.
Both sides or just one?
Just the one side, between Lone Cactus and-
Yeah, it's going to be on the north side, correct?
The north side, right.
Okay, that's good.
That existing sidewalk will be restored.
But there is a CDBG application that Ryan is working on that would extend sidewalk if we're successful in the CDBG grant application that would pick it up where Norm stops and bring it all the way to Viewpoint Drive on the north side of Long Look.
But this particular action only deals with the relocation of-
Correct. What I anticipate with Council probably in the next, probably 30 days, may bring a right-of-way resolution out there too. In addition to send the project out for bid, I imagine about 60 days will bring it for Council consideration for award. But we're at the 95% plan stage and then some, so we're putting all the final pieces together. So, now it's time to go and get out ahead of that construction. So, there's a lot of preliminary work that needs to be done in this project even before we start the roadway widening for relocation of utilities. Typical procedure for Public Works projects.
Yeah. And at a future date, no one's going to come back and say, "Well, we missed this, and we got to pay for that." Or is this money going to cover everything for now?
Well, for APS, it is comprehensive, yes.
Good. Any other questions? Jody?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, okay.
Very good, Mayor. We'll bring this back to you next week if-
Bring it back to us next week.
For consideration. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you. Next item is discussion Lake Valley Wellhouse Construction CP number W394. Neil? So, it's just a wellhouse construction, not a well. Just a wellhouse.
So, I actually have two presentations for you tonight, and I thought about keeping them short, but I also wanted to make it worth your while to come out tonight, so I didn't do that. So, Lake Valley Wellhouse-
Always taking care of us.
No.
That's real big of you, Neil.
Lake Valley Wellhouse, I just wanted to flip through a couple slides real quick. This won't go too long. Just for your information, and you probably already guessed exactly where the Lake Valley Wellhouse is, this is a map of all of our wells throughout town. And the one that you can see the Civic Center right there in the middle of the map there, the one just south of that where it says Lake Valley, that would be the Lake Valley So, on your screen, it's on the lower part there, right next to the, right next to Lake Valley Road. And the purpose of this well is essentially it serves links like Estates and Castle Canyon Mesa. We actually have two sources of water for that area. One of them is that well, so it pumps all the way over that way. And it actually pumps to what we call the Summit Tank, which is the one right there on the trail going up to the top of Glassford Hill. So, one source of water is this well. The other source of water is the booster station that's located at the tank farm that also can pump to that, to that tank. So, those are two sources of water for that area. You can see it's got a capacity of about 250 gallons per minute. And when they originally, when town was really constructed, this is an older well, so it was constructed and built down here. Town grew up around it, so it has to pump through other pressure zones to get where it needs to go. So, this is the well, the Wellhouse in the property. This is what it looks like right now. You can see that there is a building there on site, but our equipment, the well, the wellhead itself, the valve, the control valves and everything are all out in front of the building. They're not inside the building. So, that's mainly a problem for us in the wintertime like right now. So, this is what it oftentimes looks like in the wintertime. We wrap it with insulation, put heat tape on it and everything else, and sometimes it still freezes, and we'll get a pipe break because of that. So, we want to put a house over the top of it, keep it warm, and then we won't have to worry about winter operation. This is a plan view from the architect. It was Stro Architecture did this for us. We're just going to put a, basically extend the building, put it right over the top of it. And where the well is, the wellhead itself sticks off to the side, and there's going to be a little doghouse piece that goes over the top of that. So, the building will stay where it is, but if we have to pull the equipment out of the well, this little doghouse piece will unbolt it, will lift it off with a crane, set it over to the side, and then we'll be able to do whatever we need to do to the well. So, that's it. So, we went out for bids, and we actually received two bids for this. One of them was from Lehas Corporation for a little bit over $35,000. The second lowest bidder, BWC Enterprises, was at $62,000. You can see there was quite a, quite a big difference there. We didn't attract a whole lot of bidders, but we are recommending award to Lehas Corporation in the amount of $35,363. We had an original budget for this project of $40,000. We spent $5,000 for the architectural services, and so essentially we're coming in pretty much right on budget, $363 over. And we're doing an administrative transfer within our capital program to cover that and any potential change we might have. So, that's how it's going to look when we come back and present it to you next week. And if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions or comments? Marty?
Yeah, me again. The building is going to be brick or is going to be stick-built with actual insulation?
Stick-built, actual insulation. We'll have a, I believe it's a metal roof we're going to put on. We're going to actually take the roof off the old part, and then we're going to put a roof on, basically so the whole thing matches, and it's going to look like, kind of like one building.
So, it's going to be a metal roof, not shingle?
I believe so. I didn't check up on that fact before I-
But going back to what you said about having a detachable roof, they're still going to have to have it in two parts, correct?
The roof is not detachable on the main portion of the building that we're added. There's a small portion that sticks off to the north. Let me, let me back this up real quick. So, looking at this, if you look onto the left side of your screen there?
Yeah.
That is the wellhead, that the big massive thing with the big flange on top of it. That's the wellhead, and it sits outside of the footprint. If we extend the building forward, you can see how that's going to be outside. So, we're going to build the building straight forward with a roof contiguous with the existing roof. And then that little doghouse piece is going to kick off and go over the top of the wellhead, and that's, that is the only removable section. The whole piece, including the side walls, will unbolt from the main building, and the whole thing will lift up and move out of the way.
Sounds good.
Other questions? Anyone to make?
Yeah, I was just curious. What's in the existing building? What's, what's kept in there?
There is the electrical equipment for the building, the breakers, the, the shut-off switches and everything. Most of that is empty.
Yeah.
They do use it for storage for some non-critical stuff, stuff that won't freeze. But after we put the rest of the building on the front of it, they can actually use it for maybe storage of other types of things as well.
That's the original building, isn't it, that?
Yes, yes, it is.
And they're about at least, what, 40 years?
I don't know. I know it's been here at least 18 years.
18 for you. Yeah. No, it was there years before that. Okay, any other questions, comments? Bring her back to us next week. I think everyone agrees. Okay, we move on to the next item of yours. That's discussion agreement with, for professional services CH2M Hill. Water and sewer model update CIP W-400.
All right. So, ultimately, at the end of my presentation, I will be talking about the proposed contract with CH2M Hill. But I wanted to do a brief presentation on the water and sewer models themselves, just so you would get a feel for them a little bit more than maybe you might have right now, and kind of what's involved in this process. So, we actually developed the water and sewer models back between, between 2003 and 2005, and that was done by Corolla engineers. And obviously, the town has grown since then. When Corolla developed the model, they laid out the system as it existed back then, and then they did different model scenarios going into the future, projecting what our growth might look like based on our, on our general plan. And they laid out what the system might look like five years later, 10 years later, 15 years later. Well, now it's time to go back in and add what has actually happened to the town and make, put that in the model so that we now have a fresh start, knowing exactly what we have now. And then we'll be looking forward into the future again for where future lines might go, what sizes they might be, and that sort of thing. So, that's, that's the point of the update. And right now, the models can be used for engineering and planning purposes. So, we can look at the different pipes and see how much water, what the velocity of the water is through them, put a development in at a point with demands on there, and see what that does and where we need to upsize pipes. So, that's the engineering and planning part of it, looking at future scenarios versus, you know, also what we can do right now. In the contract that we're going to be entering into with CH2M Hill, should you approve it next week, is additional features that will allow us to also use it as an operational tool. And I'll talk about that a little bit more towards the end. So, what the models contain is they contain physical information about what our water system, our sewer system, look like. They contain the pipe lengths, pipe sizes, and what the, the wall friction is of those different pipes. We also have elevations in there and the demands from the customer. So, on the water side, we've taken all the information from our water users. We put those demands throughout the system as, as they happen physically in the town and, and other demands as well, like, like if you put a fire hydrant in there, how much water is coming out of a fire hydrant. And the computer runs all this information and figures out which directions the water is going in the pipes, how much water is going in each pipe, and where you might have restrictions. So, it basically mimics what our physical system looks like, and that's both on the water side and then on the wastewater side as well. So, what, after the, after the computer sits there and, you know, runs through the information that you put into it, it will tell you things like, are the pipes big enough? What pressure do we have at any given point in the system? And we can verify and see if physically out, walk out there, we can physically verify that that's the same or similar pressure to what we're seeing, so we know that the model is accurate. And then can we meet fire flow requirements? So, an example of that is before Christmas, I had a developer come in, and they want to develop the parcel that's just south of Mountain Valley Park there, off of Naas Lane. There's a couple of big vacant parcels right there, and they wanted to put in a number of duplexes. And so, we were able to run the model with information from CYFD on what fire flow requirement they needed to have at the fire hydrant and where that fire hydrant would be located on that property. We were able to run that and put in some pipes going back to attach to our existing system to see if it would work. From that, we knew that they would have to tie into two different locations with an eight-inch diameter pipe, even though the closest pipes to where they are are three-inch and four-inch, and there's a six-inch over close to Robert Road. But tying on to those three, those couple different locations, they would have to use an eight-inch diameter pipe to make those connections. So, we were able to tell them, that's what you're going to have to do if you want to build on this site. Otherwise, you won't get the fire flows. And same with sewer, are the pipes big enough? Will it overflow? You know, those sorts of things. So, this is what the water model looks like when we turn on the computer. You can see on this one, these are all the water pipes with the locations of all the fire hydrants. So, coming in a little bit closer, you probably recognize this as being the Civic Center area. And this screenshot tells us a bunch of information. It's probably too small to read, but it's telling us up here that we've got a velocity of water traveling through that pipe of .28 feet per second. But it'll tell us things like pressure, how much water is flowing through it, and that sort of thing. And so, this is a maximum day scenario, which means that during the year, there's one day that's kind of the maximum day, and this is the flows on that particular day. Okay? So, we have an average day. We often look at average day, maximum day, and then we look at peak hour. So, during the course of a day on the peak, on the max day, what is the highest hour usage number look like? So, we're usually looking at those three different kinds of scenarios. And we go back in, and we will put a fire flow requirement at a fire hydrant to see then what that does to the system as well. So, in this case, well, and here's, here's a, one of the data tables that shows all of the pipes in that area. So, it tells you between these two different nodes, which I don't know where those are, but the pipe length is 453 feet approximately. It's an eight-inch diameter pipe, and I'm looking at the top one. You can't see where I'm pointing my pointer here. Roughness coefficient, and then it tells us how much flow is going through that pipe at that time or projected to go through, and that's 12 gallons per minute. And it gives you a projected velocity of 0.08 feet per second. So, these are all the pipes in that area. And then what I wanted to show you is this actually represents the same pipe. So, if you look up close to the top, the highlighted thing says pipe number 2044 on both of these charts. The difference between these two is if you look about three-quarters of the way down where the writing starts to turn blue down there, the one on the left says there is 1,046 gallons per minute going through there. So, that's, that's a scenario with a fire flow. The other one to the right says it's 79.47 gallons per minute. So, that's the same pipe, two different flows going through it. And you can see the velocity on, on the higher flow pipe is almost three feet per second. On the lower one, it's .23 feet per second. So, this is information. We can run these scenarios, see what the model tells us, decide what needs to happen in the future as developers come in, or if we have problems with our system the way it exists right now. The sewer model is very similar. This is a layout of it. And I wanted to show you a brief example of this one because I thought this one might be one of interest to you since you're all very familiar with the North Side Sewer Project. All right? Well, this, this is the North Side area, so you can see Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch there. And you'll notice down at the lower right-hand corner of Pronghorn Ranch, there's a pipe, a blue line that goes directly to the right. That represents the North Side Sewer Project. They're actually showing it going much farther to the right than where it actually was installed because this was done in 2005. But when we installed it, we actually stopped at Robert Road and went south with it. So, that's going to be updated when we, when we do the model updates here. Now, when the model was first developed, you see these, both these from Pronghorn Ranch and Viewpoint, you see the red lines coming out of each one of those areas. Those are the force mains that start at the pump station. So, we have pump stations on the far north end of both of these developments, and we're pumping it back over the grade break to get back into our sewer system. And that's what the red lines represent, is us pumping it back over. And both of these, as you can see, go into the gravity main on Viewpoint Drive. The North Side Sewer Project took the force main from Pronghorn Ranch out of that Viewpoint Drive and put it into the North Side Sewer. So, it made more capacity in the Viewpoint Drive line. And so, when we ran the scenario, the model color-coded the pipes for us, and if you look down at the chart on the bottom, the different colors, the green is less than half-full, and then it goes to orange, and then blue and red is greater than 90% full. If you look up on the, the display there, you'll see that there's some orange pipes, and those are the ones in Viewpoint Drive, and that means that those pipes are the most full in that system, and they are between 50 and 75% full. So, we ran the same scenario, taking the Pronghorn Ranch subdivision out of that gravity main, and I just flipped it on you. You didn't notice it, but they're very similar. Now, you'll see one that's blue, and blue is actually worse because that's 75 to 90% full. And actually, I think I'm talking about this backwards because that would mean that this has Pronghorn Ranch in it, and the previous one didn't. So, it goes from between 75 to 90% full with Pronghorn Ranch subdivision in there and to this one where it is now down to between 50 and 75%. So, we've made room in that by looking at what the model said and then implementing that North Side Sewer Project. The model will also print out profile views of whatever pipes we're looking at. And so, this is what we were just talking about. And if you look on the left-hand side of your screen, that's the upstream side closest to the two subdivisions, and it travels south, which is to the right. The upper profile, you can see the, the, the small narrow lines are the, basically it's showing you the diameters of the pipe. They're kind of exaggerated, but you can see the, where the pipes are. And then the blue is how full they are. And if you look towards the right-hand side of your screen and you compare the upper one and the lower one, the upper one is more full than the lower one on the right-hand side. Is that, you seeing that? Okay? So, that's the difference between what it is like with both Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch contributing to it versus the lower one, which is just Viewpoint. So, we've made some capacity, and it looks like maybe close to 50% or 60%, 50 or 40% available capacity now. So, now moving forward to what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is the update of the model. These two maps show the, the status of what the current models provide us information on versus how much we've built out. So, on the sewer map, which is on the left, the purple is the existing model, and the green is areas that we have added since 2005. The water model is the same way on the right-hand side. The brown is what the model shows us right now, and the blue is what we have added since that time. So, we do have a significant area, number of areas that we need to update. So, the model uses, as I discussed a little bit earlier, for engineering and planning. They tell us or help us understand how future developments can connect to our system, evaluate capacity of pipes, and provide guidance for future capital projects. Because in the reports that we received, they said, "You're going to have to upsize these pipes. Here's how big they are now. Here's how big they need to be." They gave us engineering budgetary costs for all of those projects. So, those roll into our five-year, 10-year, 15-year capital plans. And also, that information is used when we sit down and develop what our capacity fees need to be. So, we look at all those numbers for the costs. We divide that among the potential future users, and we come up with the water capacity fee, the wastewater capacity fee, and so forth. Now, I also said we were going to add some additional features to the model which will help us out with operational issues. So, what we're going to be doing is adding more data into the models. Right now, we have valves in our system, and the model doesn't know we have valves in our system. It just knows it has a pipe that goes from here over to there. Well, we might have three valves in the middle of that pipe. We are adding all of the valve locations into the model so that we can look at each pipe individually, shut off whatever valves in the model we decide we want to shut off, and see how that affects the system. One- One real good example of how this will be, or how this is going to help us is when we do flushing of our system, when we turn on fire hydrants and flush the water out, we do directional flushing. We shut some valves down, we turn on a fire hydrant, and we try to increase the velocity in that pipe to really flush that line out real good and discharge out the fire hydrant. We can now go back in and see what sequence of valving to shut off, and which hydrants to, to turn on to get the highest velocities, and look at the effectiveness of flushing that way, rather than just going out and saying, well, let's just shut these down and, and turn this one on, and we'll flush for 20 minutes, and then we'll go to the next one. So we'll be able to, to see if what we're doing actually makes sense, at least according to the model. Also, if we have a, a capital project, like for example, next year, we are going to be potentially redoing the intersection at Spouse and Viewpoint Drive. When we do that, we have a lot of valves that we're going to have to shut off because we're taking a bunch of the old pipes out of the ground. They're changing the grade of that intersection, and we're putting in brand-new pipes in there. So we have a significant area that we're going to shut off. We can go in and say, okay, if we want to shut this area down, the model will tell us, these are the valves you need to shut off. We can go out in the field and shut them off. If for some reason, a particular valve is not working, or we can't find it because we have had buried valves that we don't find anymore, we can then tell the model, this valve doesn't exist, and it'll then expand that area and say, well, these are the valves now that you need to shut off to achieve the same, you know, area so that you can do the work you need to do. We'll also be able to do things like water age determinations. So sometimes people say, you know, my water tastes funny, it's stale, or whatever. We can, we can run an age, water age on the system and see if there are areas where, for some reason, we're not getting good circulation of the water through there, at least according to what the model thinks. We can go in and maybe we just need to connect a couple of pipes together, or we need to upsize a line so that we can get better flow through that area. And then ultimately, we're looking at doing things related to contaminant transport and chlorine decay. And those are a little bit more complicated because you're looking at then chemicals and chemical reactions. But we'll be able to put some information in there that says, okay, if we're dosing chlorine at these well sites, it will project what the chlorine residual should be out at the farthest ends of the system, which is where we have to maintain our half apart per million chlorine residual. So we'll be able to look at that and make sure, at least according to the model, it says we're getting effective disinfection everywhere, and maybe we're not over-disinfecting in places we don't need to be. All right.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah. And I do, and I do want to talk a little bit about the contract as well, if, if you...
Oh, go ahead.
You want me to do that first?
No, go ahead, yeah, you do.
Okay, okay. So next week, we'll be coming back to you with a contract with CH2M Hill. Obviously, you know, they do operate our water and wastewater system, and they have for 20, well, since 1999 on the water, on the water system. But their engineering branch out of Phoenix proposed on this project. We had them, we had Corolla engineers who were the ones who built our original model, and another firm, Sunrise Engineering, that all were shortlisted for interviews. And of those three firms, we selected CH2M Hill to do the work for us. So the budget that we had for this, we anticipated was going to be about $400,000, $200,000 on the water side, 200 on the wastewater side. And it's going to take at least 18 months to get this done. And so in the budget, we actually budgeted $200,000 this year, and we have a placeholder of $200,000 next year. So if you agree to this contract, essentially, we are committing ourselves to budgeting the additional money next year as well to finish this project up because it is a 400, approximately $400,000 contract. And I think with that, that's everything I have to say.
Okay, now Marty?
Yeah, getting back to the models that you were talking about, when you're looking at them on the computer, are these animated models so that you could simulate different situations, like a, a pipe break at a certain point, or like you said, you know, turning on and off, you know, the different valves?
Right. So these actually are what we see when we turn on the computer. So this one is a blow-up of the civic center area, this is what we see.
Okay, so there's nothing animated, so you can't simulate the flow on a...
We can simulate things, but it's not animated. So if we want to simulate, simulate a, like a pipe break, we would go into a pipe and we would, we'd probably have to put a node there or something, and then say that there's an open pipe right there.
Okay.
And then we would run the model, and you can't really see much on here. It will put some of the information on the screen, but we would have to go then to the data tables, or onto these, onto here where it's got the information printed, and look and see what that's done either to the flow through the pipe, or what is this, what's happening with the system pressure? Because usually, when you have a leak, your system pressure drops. So we can do things like that. Most of the time, we don't do it for simulating leaks. Most of the time, it's, we assume that the system is, if, if there's a leak out there, we're going to get it fixed, and that's, that's number one. But most of the time, we're using it more for, you know, like I say, when a development comes in and they put a new demand on our system. For most, most areas, when there's a, a development going in, if it's commercial, the fire department wants to see 1,500 gallons a minute at a fire hydrant. But we have water lines out in our system ranging anywhere from two inches in diameter up to 24 inches in diameter. Obviously, if you have a fire hydrant on a 24-inch diameter pipe, you're not going to have really any problems getting that 1,500 gallons a minute. But if they're developing in an area where you have six-inch or four-inch mains, or two-inch mains, they're not going to get the fire flow. And in fact, we won't even put a fire hydrant on a line that's smaller than eight inches in diameter. But it does help us with those kinds of evaluations.
Does it also tell you how many homes are affected through that?
We can, we can tell it that we want to look at pressure contour maps, and it will show us, kind of like a, a normal contour map where you're looking at elevations, it'll show us the pressures in that similar manner, and we can look and see how big of an area that would be, that would be affected by an additional demand. Yes. Because when you're doing those fire flow scenarios, there are requirements for not reducing the system pressure down below 20 pounds per square inch. So during normal operation, day in and day out, we are generally between 40 pounds per square inch and 80 pounds per square inch. That's our normal operating range. Under a fire flow type of scenario, the developer has to show us that if they have a fire flow event and they're going to pull all this water, they cannot lower the system pressure anywhere down to below 20 pounds per square inch. We have to maintain that positive pressure on the system, and that's what the model will tell us.
Neil, I, I think the council member Grossman was saying that if you added animation, that it would be a lot more interesting.
Well, I happen to agree with him, actually.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's kind of boring looking at this, but...
I, I don't really have a question, Neil, but the capabilities of this is very impressive. I can't imagine how, how you manage without this type of technology. I mean, this must be such a blessing to, to have.
It's very handy.
Oh, my gosh. In fact, in my head, and you can all, you can all just make fun of me, I think water model doesn't cover it. It's Einstein's brain, water model. I cannot believe all the things that you can solve and manage with this. So the only question I have in here is, you talked about the 200,000 this budget, 200,000 the next budget. Would that be the total cost for, or will there be more expenditures in a third budget year?
So the, the contract with CH2M Hill is actually for 395,502 dollars. So that's, that's the contract with them. So unless we run into some problem, that should be the cost that we're going to pay. We actually also have, I believe, $30,000 in the contract as a, as an allowance or placeholder, so that if they have to come in and do some additional field testing that they hadn't anticipated, we've got an extra $30,000 sitting there. They're not going to bill us for that unless we understand that they have to do it, and then we agree to it. But it's already built in, into that. So if we don't do that and something else comes up, we've still got that $30,000 sitting there that we could potentially use. The only other cost is going to be the cost with the software company, because we're, we're actually upgrading the software from a standalone model, like we're doing right now, to one that actually is integrated into our GIS system. And so it's a whole lot more powerful and easier to, to do things with it as it's tied into GIS. And that's, that's kind of the way all these companies are going. So at some point, we would have had to do it anyways because they stopped supporting their standalone models.
Okay.
And that cost is supposed to be, I believe, about $3,000 for the sewer model and $3,000 for the water model. That number is not included in here. It'll be probably budgeted in the operations budget, but...
So the answer is we'll cover it in two budget years?
Yes.
I do have a question, though, that just occurred to me about the technology. It'll constantly be changing and improving, et cetera. And we might be wise to set aside funds to always be able to upgrade, to better manage these wonderful water models. Just a thought.
Yeah, and you know, well, a couple of things. One is obviously, we've, haven't had the greatest of times over the last 10 years that made it difficult to do that. Number two is that we, we get a lot of planning with the engineers because we, part of what they're doing is they're looking at our general plan 2025 right now. They're looking at all of the development that we're projecting, they're incorporating that into the model, and they are projecting out where water lines and sewer lines need to go, how big they need to be. All of that is in there. So that gives us a roadmap for the future, and as you, as you're aware, this model has served us well for 10 or 12, 13 years now. You know, so we don't have to plan for it every year, but we can maybe do more minor updates, like on a five-year period type thing, and not do more major ones for, you know, 10, 15 years. But, but yeah, as, as technology increases, increases, as if they don't support their software, then we have to, you know, we do have to do upgrades. But software upgrades after we get to this new platform that's GIS-based, you know, should be a little bit more easy to do.
Thank you, Neil.
Rick?
No.
Mike, Jody?
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Thank you, Mary, I appreciate that. Neil, on this one, the model, is it proprietary to CH2M Hill, or is this proprietary to the town?
Neither. Well, the, the model software, this is called H2O Map Sewer and H2O Map Water. So the company is called Innovize, and this is their product. There are other products out there, different companies that have this water and sewer modeling software. Generally, consultants like CH2M Hill can use all of the different models. But our model is, it's a, it's a good platform, it's a good modeling software. So they will use our software, they will use our existing information, and they'll import it into the, into the new platform, and they'll build from there. And then, when they're done, they will give it back to us, and it's, it's essentially our model. So we own, we kind of own the model, but they're going to update us for us, we don't own the software.
Okay. So as far as the information for, with the model and all the data, then we're always able to access that and build off of it, like with the updates, what Councilwoman Laura Lee was talking about.
Yes.
So we're, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just was considering how we use this tool, and I'm thinking, for instance, in a new development like the Glassford Hill development over there, as they build out, they're going to come to us to ask for assistance, as you gave that example on some of these duplexes. And I'm wondering, how far do we go to plan for that to a point that we say, well, we're not going to do any more until build out, you know, evolves at certain times? So we're, we're ready to handle right now, as an example, that area to what extent, you know, just in general terms? And I know how this model, you know, would obviously be helpful in determining that.
So when this model was originally developed, the sewer model, back 2002, 2000, or between 2003, 2005, we actually knew that at some point, Glassford Heights would be coming in, or at least it was projected that they would. In the model, there's a, there's some development, and this was in the general plan, it was called the ranches, both of those two sections of property. And the, the density of the development was based on the general plan, so we kind of knew how many houses were going to go over there. So if you look at this, this map down here, and you look at the far left-hand side, and you see where Castle Canyon Mesa is?
Mm-hmm.
There's a line that goes straight north out of Castle Canyon Mesa, and it hits another line angling off. Well, if you go to the left on that line, that is where Glassford Heights plugs in. When this model was developed based on the density, they modeled it using, I believe it's about 3,100 homes for those two sections of land. And the way it split out was, you, you actually, you'll see another, another line a little bit further north that's parallel to that angled one. That one also serves Granville and Glassford Heights. They had loaded the sewer model with 1,400 homes on the northern line and 1,700 homes on the southern line. And so when Glassford Heights came in and they presented us with their master planning documents that we have to then review and make sure it all looks like it's going to work, we said, look, you guys are planning somewhere, you're saying 3,100 homes here, and over here, you're saying 3,500 homes. And if you're going more than 3,100 homes, and, and in fact, if you're going more than 1,400 on this northern line and 13, and 1,700 on this lower line, you will have to do an off-site sewer evaluation for the downstream pipes to make sure it can handle it. Because our model said that these were the numbers, and our, and we know we've got capacity for those because that's what the model looked at. If you want to bump those numbers up, you're going to have to do an off-site sewer study and come back to us and tell us. And if it shows that these pipes can't handle it, you're going to have to upsize those pipes as well. Right now, they're electing to say it's not going to go over the 3,100 number. So that's what the model 10 years ago put out there, and that's how we've been able to use it when we're looking at these plans.
Other questions, anyone? Any else, Larry?
Well, just a compliment to Neil and the way that he's running the utility department. And you, as mayor and council, have been complimented many times by the forward-thinking planning that happens. And this is a very classic example of forward-thinking, advanced planning. And yes, it's not inexpensive, but this is what allows us to avoid disasters, number one. And, and then number two, trying to scramble around at the last minute to provide the appropriate sewage, in this case, or water in, in other cases. And that's just really a good thing. Because I remember the days, as does Neil, when we first purchased a water company, we had no plans going forward. We just purchased an entity and started building that system. And for the first couple of years, we scrambled, and we had water outages that certainly were unplanned. We had water well failures. And so any advanced planning that Neil and his team do with water or wastewater is immensely valuable to us.
Any other comments, questions? Neil, anything else?
Well, maybe of interest, you may remember, I don't know, 18 months ago, we came before you and, and we had a development agreement that we wanted to sign with, with Granville, and it was a sewer upsizing agreement going through Granville. And what that was related to was what the model told us. Granville, after they got off of the big main, they were putting in eight-inch diameter mains to serve their development. Well, on the, on the map above you, the line that we talked about going north out of Castle Canyon Mesa, it didn't exist. So somebody had to put that line in. And it, and so as Granville now developed their unit seven, they took a line that they were going to build as eight-inch, and they up-sized it to 12-inch coming south because we asked them to, and we participated in that cost. And now that gives us a place to connect on to, which is going to be another 12-inch line coming south into... line coming south into, well, actually, more into, into, yeah, well, Castle Canyon Mesa and Prescott East Highway area right there. 12-inch line will come all the way south on Prescott East Highway and will allow those residents over there, should they ever decide to connect, to tie in. I know there's discussion right now with whether Diamond Valley will tie in, and they would have to tie onto that line also. So that's the connector, and it's already planned, and part of it is already in.
Good, good planning, Neil. Any other comments, questions?
That's good.
Jody, any more puzzles?
Good.
Okay. Neil, you're doing a good job, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would say everybody will bring it back, bring it back to us. Thank you so much, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item we have is adjournment. Meeting is adjourned.
All right. (applause)[1789.38]